Did you turn all of them on? I think so. I did. I don't think I ever turned them on.
Oh, because they can't use it.
Yeah. Can you turn on your mic? Is it working?
That.
There we go. We're ready to go if you are, sir.
Okay. You guys ready?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Does my mic work?
We'll call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order this November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. If staff could call roll, please.
Yes. Philip Combs.
Present.
Robert Estrada.
Here.
Paul Wagaman.
President.
Lynn Larson. Ryan Pearson is excused.
I'm here.
Brian Parsons is excused. Don Daniels.
Here.
You have quorum.
Thank you so much. Before us, we have the minutes of November first, two thousand twenty-three. I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Larson made a motion in Mr. Wagaman's second. Any changes, questions, concerns to those minutes, November first, two thousand twenty-three? No hearing, no changes. All those in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the minutes passed as written. Thank you. Any changes to our agenda tonight?
No, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Other, if you wouldn't indulge me, I do apologize for the late start. We probably had about a hundred and twenty people involved at this open house that just occurred, which was quite surprising and unexpected. So the timing, we just, we didn't put enough time in between. So apologies.
Let's see. No problem at all. Good to see public here and share their comments and concerns. So great. Tonight, we do not have, oh, excuse me, sorry. We will open up public comment at this time. So anyone wishing to share any information to fellow commissioners and myself on any subject will open up public comment. We reserve the time for three minutes. If you wish, I don't think we had anyone signed up for tonight's staff. No one. Okay. But anyone in the audience, if they wish to speak to the commission, you do come up to the microphone over there and you have three minutes. I appreciate it. State your name and the city you reside in. Thank you.
Thank you. Is this on?
Yep.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Sue Peterson, and I'm the president of the Carp Lake Improvement Association. We've been talking to the city since June about our lake going dry, and we haven't made a big deal out of it, but it is very concerning to us. There are forty-two parcels around that lake. Property values add up to about twenty-one million dollars, and we, we are super concerned about, I'm new in this position as president, but I'm learning that there seems to be very little collaboration between surface water management and groundwater management. And I think what's happened to Carp Lake is the Water District is selling water to the city of Spanaway. I don't really know how much they're selling. At the same time, there was a big Public Works project creating roundabouts and sidewalks and a lot of, excuse me, a lot of impervious surface all around Lake City, which is where Carp Lake is located. So this is a ten-thousand-year-old lake that has been fed by groundwater and surface water all that time. And just in the recent years, there's more and more housing being built right in the watershed, more roofs, more driveways, more sidewalks, and, and the water is just not getting to the lake. So I'm very concerned about the apparent lack of coordination between groundwater and surface water management, impervious surfaces. Who's collecting the water? The city seems mostly concerned with filtering and cleaning up the surface water, but then it, we still need more water because, because it's going away. And we don't want Lakewood to become lakeless.
Great. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak tonight? Go ahead and step up to the microphone. Asking again, anyone wishing to speak? No one? All right. No problem. Appreciate it. And do we have no one online?
There is an Angela LaFave. I'm not sure if she wants to speak. Ms. LaFave, if you do, please raise your hand. And she's not responding. So it looks like no online public comment. I would like to tell you as well, Mr. Chair, that Ryan Pearson is here remotely. So he is on Zoom.
Okay. Can you guys hear me?
Screens are not.
Oh.
Sorry, nothing's up. No problem. It's all good. Welcome, Mr. Pearson, as well, if you can hear myself. So seeing or hearing no other comments from the public, we'll close the public comment period at this time. Tonight, we do not have a public hearing. We are going to continue on under unfinished business, the continuation discussion regarding city parking and regulations. Ms. Tiffany.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is a continuation from the discussion that was begun in your last meeting on November first. And so, November first, yes. What we were just gonna do is offer for you a quick refresher of some of the information we provided last meeting and a little bit more, but then turn it back over to you again if, in case there was any other discussion you wanted to have amongst yourselves. So as was just discussed in the open house, we just had, we were talking about housing, but we were also discussing the impacts that that will have in residential areas in particular on transportation systems, the roads themselves, as well as pressures for parking. Right now, there's a number of policies in this comprehensive plan related to parking, and they're wide-ranging. Some are supportive of additional parking and some are not, just depending on where their focus was. And so it's a somewhat haphazard approach right now in the comprehensive plan. There are three sections in the city code that deal with parking, citywide, it's under eighteen A eighty, but then the downtown and the station district subareas both have their own chapters related to parking as well. And as you know, and was discussed last time, the city currently does not allow officially on-street slash off-site parking. So as we move into the new changes to housing based on eleven-ten and thirteen thirty-seven, this is the middle housing and the accessory dwelling unit bills adopted this year. You now have significantly additional density possible in the areas that are, have been in the past traditionally single-family. This map you saw last time, but just to reiterate, in the yellow, particularly on the west side of the city, that is where it will be an additional two units per lot of either middle housing or accessory dwelling units. And then in this, I've been calling it a U shape here, in this orange lots is where it would be up to four units per lot. The critical areas on properties do limit the applicability of these bills. So whether you're next to a lake or a creek and there's buffers or it's wetlands or other potential seismic or landslide issues, those may limit where this would apply. This map you also, I think, saw last time, but what it, what you now see is the critical areas, in addition to the green is where we have oak stands or that are considered critical areas within the city. But the additional information on this map is all the red lines. These are the city rights of way that are less than sixty feet wide. And that is where, right now, under the current design standards for streets, it is too narrow to allow on-street parking. And for, obviously, these are areas that were built out before incorporation. These are existing neighborhoods, existing road systems, and so the idea of whether or not there's right of way to expand, what the current street looks like and its width is, is a question we, you'd have to probably deal with piece by piece over time. So just another note here, and this is, again, apologies if this is getting too much in the weeds, but the left-hand side, this U is a quarter mile from the major transit stops, right? The Sounder Station and the Pierce Transit Center or the Bus Rapid Transit. That quarter mile is where it's going to be the four units on a lot. The half-mile buffer, not to confuse everyone, but it is two different rules. These are where no off-street or onsite parkings, parking can be a permitting condition. So within these areas, a half-mile away from those transit stations, parking is not allowed to be required. So again, looking at on-street parking and the design of streets and how they might be redesigned over time, either with additional right-of-way or what, that's going to be a key issue for the city moving forward in the twenty-four periodic review. These were the questions that you talked about last time. I don't know if you want to just pause here and, and see if there's any more discussion you want to have or anything else, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Larson.
Thank you. It, it has occurred to me this last week as I have been driving the community and looking at how these parking areas would be affected and imposed and, and created, that they could impede the, the access by delivery vehicles to the various residences. And I think that, that that should be added as a criteria is to make sure, because everybody gets Amazon deliveries and groceries by delivery now, and well, that's, it looks like it's going to go into the future as an integral part of our neighborhoods. So I'd just like to make sure we're considering that as well.
Great. Any other comments at this time? Any questions? Mr. Estrada? You have microphone, please. Thank you.
Just a clarification. On our chart here on page twenty-two, twenty-three, on the parking standards table.
Oh, yes, in the, in the packet, yes.
In the packet. So retail parking standard is for retail per one thousand gross square feet is three. But then retail in mixed use per thousand is only two. I don't understand. I would think it would be just the other way around. Can you clarify that for me, please?
I cannot. The only thing I can tell you is that over time, it may be an error in adoption. It may be there's philosophy behind it. It sounds, it looks like Mr. Combs has an answer for you. Go ahead.
Mr. Combs, you have it.
I mean, this is city, this is all the cities in Washington have adopted, have shifted towards this, where you have shared parking, it's more manageable, and it's successful in every urban city. So the parking need there, if you have a hundred apartments, and then you have a hundred thousand square foot of retail, the retail parkers are not needed to be there at night, and so they can double up on the parking. And in fact, that two to one is probably pretty generous. I think most of the cities are down to about one to one and a quarter. And so us still having it so high at two definitely says we're suburban. So I, I think it's generous. It doesn't, it, when you first look at it, though, it definitely looks weird. Yes.
Go ahead. If you want to, go ahead, Mr. Combs or Steph, Stephanie.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear the question.
No.
It's, it's, I'm sorry, and I don't know if I'm supposed to address, but I, it's, it's two to one thousand square feet.
Two parking spots.
Parking stalls per thousand. So that's, that's what that ratio is about. So the two to, two to one, sorry, it's a little confusing. I just shortened it because I'm lazy.
Go ahead. Oh, yeah, just one moment. Okay, we'll continue on for this questions from the council commission. Anyone else? Mr. Wagaman?
And, and so it, it makes sense to maybe minimize the parking, but all of a sudden, when the need comes and, you know, if I come home at night and needed a place to park, and I can't find a spot, then what do I do? Then I'm forced to either violate some rule or get in a fight with my neighbor or, I, I mean, so are we making, or are we part of a system that's making rules that we're going to turn around and kick ourselves and say, why did we do that?
Well, where we sit right now in the city of Lakewood is it was built out before incorporation. It had the streets designed as they were designed at the time, and since incorporation, the city has not made the decision to allow on-street parking, particularly because of operation and maintenance costs, because if it is public parking on, on the street, the city then has to take on the responsibility of maintenance and code enforcement in those areas. If it was private on-street parking, like in front of a business or something, then maybe the business takes care of it. But in the past, that's primarily been the decision. Why? Now we're in a new world, this new state law change that says you cannot require parking within these areas of your city, even though you're now maybe quadrupling the number of units on a lot. Now Lakewood is, is at the point of having to decide, are we going to continue with this thought of no on-street parking? Or are we going to bite the bullet and figure out how to try to get it in place over time?
Yep. Mr. Larson, sorry.
The, the possibility that we would make a mistake in whatever ground we plow here is reasonably high. I think it, and, but we have, but we do have to take action. We do have to, to do the best that we can with the state law and with our community. I would just like to see in a regulation, a periodic review as to the success of, of the decisions that get made that we recommend to the council every two years or something like that as, as part of the, as part of the action. So there is a review. So if we need to adjust it and make it better, then we've got a venue and a system that allows for that.
Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Combs.
I don't want to say.
No, no, go ahead.
I, I would say, I would second that. I, I think that just, to me, goes without saying, we have to, you know, hold ourselves accountable and keep revisiting it, everything on a regular basis. But I would add, this is a state, state mandate. So we're not coming up with this stuff. It's something that we're having to figure out because the state's requiring us to. So knowing that, I, I'm probably backpedaling just a little bit because I was all in on the solutions. But I, I would say, is it still an option to push back a little bit on the state? And I don't know how or who, but collectively, I can't imagine we're the only city struggling to figure out how to come up with parking where it doesn't exist. And, and so if there is some pushback possible, I think it would merit, this is something that merit, this is not a simple legislative push, this House bill. This is a major middle housing push, and I get the, the need. Do I believe that this is going to solve a homeless issue? I do not. Do I believe that this will help solve a, a, a housing crisis? I believe it could contribute. I don't believe this is the magic pill or the silver bullet, but I know that the state feels like they have to do something. I feel like as a, you know, we have to stewards for this city, at least say, this doesn't make sense. And I know that we, I know it's passed, it is what it is. But that would, I would put that back on the table as something to, to promote. And if we're gonna, you know, in the meantime, still keep coming up with a solution that we can try and get our arms wrapped around, I think one thing that we, it's okay for us to do is to pause and look at what other cities are doing, because we are not the only city dealing with it. We're in the forefront of this. I've heard this conversation at other cities, and so I think it's okay for us to not have to feel like we have to make a decision. And sorry, I'm beating, beating this down a little bit because I know we want to come up with a solution for the cop plan. So whatever plans we come up with, I think that we maybe write them in pencil and recommend it, you know, and move forward that way, rather than saying, this is the one and only way, and we're going to do it this way. I do feel like parking is a sensitive issue, because when you don't have it, it's really inconvenient. And, and so it's, it's really hard, and it's a good problem to have because it means that there's enough demand, there's activity and stuff. But it's not a good one to have when it's you. And so I think that it's something that we do need to think through. I think that if we proceed with it, we will probably, as a city, have to do some uncomfortable things, which is, I, I do believe, and I said this last time, I believe it'll be public and private contributions, public and private on maintenance and, and everything. And so, yeah, that does mean that we're going to have to. And so, yeah, that does mean that we're going to have to start enforcing parking where we didn't before. And there will be areas that we just can't park because of right-of-way. Those are going to have to stay that way. I believe we can be more generous in the areas where there is a lot of density and less generous as it gets into single-family neighborhoods. Because last thing we want is Paul beating up his neighbor because he does not park. And so, well, you threatened to fight your neighbor, so I don't know.
Right first.
I'm just kidding. I'm making light of it, but it is a sensitive issue for folks. And we want the businesses to be successful. We don't want the neighborhoods to feel this crunch all of a sudden that. But the reality is, that's what this House bill does. So we are having to deal with it. And that that's my approach is I still think we push back on the state. I think that we work with what we do have and come up with solutions. I think that we have to be generous, but we're going to have to also enforce. And yeah, that's going to, some people are going to say, well, that that enforcement doesn't feel like it's sitting on the right people, but that's it's going to be enforced wherever those people are trying to park, which is means it's a supply and demand issue, not an economic, you know, inequality.
Great. Mr. Larson?
I agree with that. I wonder also that we might think about phasing some of these ideas in two functions so that we can try them one at a time or two at a time and and see how they fit and how they fit with each other and might be able to create a a system that evolves that becomes a solution. Because we're like I said before, we're plowing new ground here and and that gives us a chance to learn along our way, just an idea.
You're good? You're good? Everyone's good? Go ahead, Mr. Wegeman?
I guess the only thing I would just add on that, you know, look at places where people want to go. And in the first place, I think is C-Tech, you have to go to the airport. And you need a place to park, you know, so there's there's some public venues there where you can park in the garage. There, people don't like some of those. So then there's lots of private people that have done things. And then there's many of us now, we got Uber that does some things for you. I mean, so there's multiple options. I think one of one of the ladies, one of our citizens in the open house earlier, she came to me and just kind of melded down. She said, this is just a single-family area. My cul-de-sac is ruined or going to be ruined by all these new rules. And I said, well, I told her, I said, well, first off, when you vote, just remember who you vote for, they're making those decisions. But there's some of these decisions have to get made and they're not easy. And but again, Disneyland and Disney World, you know, they've had to solve the problem, you know, because everybody wants to be at their place and they have to figure out how to get people in the door and a place to put their car. So we will just have to work through that.
Great. And ma'am, we're going to, we don't take questions right now afterwards? Nope. Thank you so much. If we can just continue on with this thing. And then afterwards, if you wish, you can come up and ask the staff a question if you don't mind. Not to ignore you, but this is that not an open discussion. Thank you so much for understanding. Yes.
So just a quick comment in response to Mr. Combs. I don't want to get too editorial in my comments, but the Association of Washington Cities and Counties ultimately agreed to these two bills. Meaning they came to the table and said, given the pressure from the other side who wanted to do even more, this was the result. Having said that, you're absolutely right. Local governments who are now reacting to this, seeing it on what is potentially going to look like, that is part of the conversation that's happening as they prepare for this next legislative session is some kind of fix-it bill, if you will, that starts to tweak some things that people are saying, hey, wait a minute, this doesn't, maybe it was well-intentioned, but it doesn't make sense. So I can certainly share your sentiments with council and to those that are dealing the lobbying.
Great. Okay, continue on.
Okay. With this topic, just so you are aware, the city council is going to talk about parking as well on December 4th. So if you're looking for something to do that night, you're welcome to watch or attend, but they will. And it's not a time to make decisions at all. This is really just to give them a heads up because it's not just the 24 comp plan. Of course, this is just street design. And when right now our Public Works Department, for instance, is applying for grants for designing streets, they're not assuming on-street parking. And so it's do they need to change the way they're applying for grants and those kinds of things as well? So this is just the start of a conversation, but the council did want to get your feedback. So thank you very much.
So ma'am, December 4th, if it's regarding parking, streets, all of that stuff, no problem. So December 4th with the city council, you're more than welcome to come and share your comments. Thank you. All right, sorry.
No, no worries at all. So the second item on tonight's agenda is taking a look at some changes also thanks to our very active state legislature right now. And this is relate, oops, sorry. This is related to what is being termed a climate change bill, but it is more than that. It affects a number of elements and requirements in our code coming forward over this next year. And so we're going to call this climate change and greenhouse gas reduction planning, just for purposes of this evening. So as you know, and you handled, the city adopted, oops, sorry, an energy and climate change element in 2021. The following year, the city adopted a work plan to implement that climate change element. But then in this year, the state legislature adopted a bill numbered 1181, and so I'll probably use that as shorthand, that requires some additional things now under the GMA specific to climate change resiliency and greenhouse gas emission reductions. So with what they have done with their bill, we're now having to go back and reopen our climate element and figure out how to react to the bill. Essentially, though, it's not just that one element. It is also land use, capital facilities, utilities, transportation, parks and rec, all our areas in our comp plan that we have to verify comply with this bill. We are waiting for the Department of Commerce to come out with its guidelines by the end of this year. And hopefully, it's going to be somewhat of a soft touch, given how quickly jurisdictions in the 24 process have to do this. So we are hoping that the guidelines come out and we're able to say, okay, compare what we have right now to that. Three things need to change and we're good to go. That's, you know, fingers crossed, but we'll see. We have a number of years, though, to actually dang it, to react to some of these things. So for instance, by 2029 is when there's supposed to be a new version with new sub-elements for climate change and then and also a transportation. And then the other elements involve, it's not until our next big 10-year cycle. So what we're going to do with these requirements here is in the next year, simply say, this is what we're going to do over the next 10 years. We're going to look at our energy and climate change chapter that's already in place and just within it, drop in those pearls that say, we understand this is a requirement and this is what we're going to do over the next decade to comply. Turning to the work plan, though, that was adopted after council and the commission take took a look at it. If you remember, there was something like 89 action items and then we got it down to 14, thanks to your work. There's actually quite a few that have either been completed or are continuing to to happen right now. First of all, the adoption of a work plan. The non-motorized transportation plan was finished this year, as was the Clover Creek floodplain analysis and a critical areas chapter update. The public engagement plan for the 24 process is, we're right in the middle of it. South Sound Military and Communities Partnership is working with the Nisqually Tribe and a number of other jurisdictions, pushing for that expansion along the I-5 Nisqually Delta area. I believe this came to you at some point. Essentially, the I-5 and the way the bridges are built there are affecting fish passage and there is a greater and greater risk over time of actually overtopping I-5. So it's a issue that the military is worried about for their reasons and the tribe is worried about for theirs and then local governments as well. The tree code update is done. The work to participate in regional climate change discussions is ongoing. And more to come on that. The city is part of a group that's now started with mayors around the Pierce County as well as the county executive about how maybe to partner somewhat like the South Sound Housing Affordability Partners, which was recently formed to talk about housing. They're talking about doing something like that regarding greenhouse gas emissions efforts. There's a couple of things where we're hoping to get a grant to help us move forward. The creation of a greenhouse gas reduction plan, which will be much more specific than what you see in the current energy and climate change chapter. Talking about EV or electric vehicle infrastructure strategy with the county and surrounding cities. And then continuing to move forward with our urban forest program. Just a note here, there has already been a significant amount of money set aside for urban forestry. $340,000 out of the American Rescue Plan Act funds are set aside. About $420,000 came from the recent Panatoni project on tree mitigation fees. And then there's also been about 100,000 applied for in this grant that I'm talking about. So over the next five years or so, there's about $900,000 that we have identified hopefully for this program. And it's a matter of hiring an arborist or expanding a current arborist scope of work to be able to be on call for questions about either private or public tree preservation, doing a tree canopy assessment. When the tree code was adopted in 22, it was really just a high-level GIS kind of look as opposed to walking the ground. This is talking about doing a true canopy assessment and that hopefully will be happening this next year. And then continuing to do education and outreach over the next few years for the public. Things like encouraging, just you're in your backyard, you got some room or if there's volunteers who want to work near our streams or in our parks and be planting trees, hopefully that's something we can support. The things that haven't really started yet is an update to the countywide planning policies. We're all sick to death of them right now, given the 24 process. But someday we'll need to incorporate this new climate change information and requirements in them. The building code, which is in Title 15, state Washington Building Code Council decides on building codes every three years. And then local governments have about a year after that to decide whether they want to amend or not. That will eventually be incorporating climate change. And then there's the Tacoma Pierce County Solid Weight Management Plan, which is under an update process. So we're tracking that. This is a little more detail on where we hope to spend time and effort over the next five years. So within the next two years, updating that energy element and climate change element, just to say we're about to fully comply with 1181. And then there's three other elements in the comp plan that we would hope to draft by the mid 2025 to make them compliant. And then between mid 25 and mid 29, there's a number of other things that are identified. So fully updating our climate change chapter, fully updating land use transportation chapters, and then looking again at the electric vehicle plan, maybe urban heat island resilience in addition to the tree canopy increase that we would hope would help. And then looking again at planting native and climate resilient plants for municipal projects and then continuing to move forward with our urban forestry program. Just for giggles, I wanted to provide to you as well, information from our greenhouse gas emissions tool through Google, which the city is currently using. This is 2022 data. And what it shows citywide is that there's about a 29% tree canopy. If you recall, the city ultimately adopted the 40% by 2050, after a lot of discussion at the commission and council levels. As far as building emissions, what you see here is about 293,000 metric tons, forgive me if that's the wrong measurement, coming from the buildings within the city of Lakewood. You see the darker blue. It's very hard to read, I know, but the darker blue is where more of the emissions are coming from. What you see at the bottom here is a is a little over half, which is similar to the amount of land use in the city. But a little over half of that is coming from residential areas and then a little less than half is coming from the non-residential areas. And not to belabor this, but that makes sense because even though there's a lot less non-residential, there's often going to be more emissions from those, particularly an industrial use, for instance. Transportation emissions, about 181,000 of those emissions, I think it's metric tons, excuse me if I'm wrong. But what you see here is that there's a way to distinguish inbound and outbound, and I'll show that on the next slide, meaning people coming to Lakewood, those emissions versus those leaving. What you see on this slide, though, is that there was the significant drop in 2020 due to COVID and the shutdown and how much of a difference that made on emissions, just because people were driving less. And then you see also that given 21 and 22's increases, we're pretty much back up where we were pre-COVID. So inbound is about 75,600, outbound about 76,600, so a half and half. And then inside the city itself, meaning you're in the boundaries the whole time of your trip, is estimated to be almost 29,000. So all of this still has not totally clarified for the city how much of that is purely I-5 pass-through traffic. That's something we're still trying to work with Google on to see if there's a way to figure out, like if they estimate on a stretch of highway and know that that many cars go through Lakewood, can we take that out or do something like that? So more to come there. And that is it. So just wanting to provide you that update and let you know that in the short term, there'll be a few high-level tweaks, but over the next five years, that's going to be a major focus for city planning. Have to take any questions, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Strata?
Appreciate the 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 feedback there. A question in our in our packet, there was a reference to the city of Lakewood conducting a experiment per se in the month of June. For two weeks, they were going to lower, they were going to dim the lights. And but it should not be noticeable to the naked eye. What was the results?
Positive in that PSC felt it was worth pursuing in more areas of the city. So it's a cost savings without concern for safety because of dimmer lighting. So I think you're going to see more permanent and wider expansion of this idea of dimming the lights. So it's something I can bring some more information back from our Public Works Department if you'd like.
Did them the lights, PSC, because they own the they own the power poles, I assume, the lights.
It's either PSC, Lakewood Light and Power or Tacoma Power that do, yeah.
I don't think Lakewood, Lakewood doesn't own any of the.
Correct.
That's right. So it's just, okay.
So if I could just follow up on that, our street was an experiment and was testing. And I provided feedback. I have one telephone pole with the new LED lights. And I could not tell the difference from when they lowered it. If they wouldn't have said anything, I wouldn't even even noticed. So I turned in the feedback that, hey, whatever you did, it didn't change, like I say, the the amount of lighting, didn't notice any of that. See, I felt same safe as I did, you know, previously. So yeah, it was kind of a, they sent a card and said, can you watch it over the next two weeks and see if you can tell a difference? I took pictures. I tried to, you know, camera, I couldn't tell. Yep. So I'm sorry, go ahead. Continue your segments. It was a cost savings, yeah. Hopefully to the, you know, us, the bill payers, I hope it was a cost savings to that.
That's the intent.
Yeah, good. Did you have a second question, Mr. Strata?
Regarding, I understand that the in June of 23, a survey, 519 electric vehicles were registered in Lakewood and 27 public charging stations. So how much of a change has happened from the beginning of the year? And do we foresee, do we have inputs from entities that are going to build more charging stations because of the increase in the number of vehicles?
I'm trying to think how to answer that, Mr. Strata. The city is talking about it. As you can imagine, the concern is maintenance of the structures if it were to be publicly owned. There's also been issues in other area, other cities that have, for instance, charging stations in parks where people are there all night and there's issues when the park is supposed to be closed, but you have people there. Whether it's nefarious or not, they're they're in a closed park. And so there's there's also discussion about how do you incentivize or even provide grants for private businesses to install these charging stations and maintain them as well? So that's actually going to be part of what our energy and climate change chapter updates are going to address is how vigorously does the city want to pursue EV charging?
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Mr. Larson? That's a perfect entree to my my point that I was going to bring. And that is that, and I apologize if this is already there and I have. And that is that uh, and I apologize if this is already there and I haven't noticed it. But I'd like to see it as part of the policies that we move forward. To have an incentive program to uh, enact certain greenhouse gas. Uh, uh, limitation or reduction. Uh, uh, events, factors, uh, practices. Uh, by the building industry and by the public at large as they apply for building permits. So that they could be, their building permits could be uh, accelerated, prioritized, the more. Uh, with points awarded for uh, achieving these goals. And I think if we, we, we put some uh, a natural market oriented uh, incentives in place that. That uh, the reaction would be logical and uh, and progressive for us all.
Any other questions, uh, Mr. Combs?
I'll be fast to piggyback on that. And I think tho, those were recommendations we had when we went through the whole exercise. So I think I'm. I, I still agree with that. I just came out of um, some meetings today and I'm listening to builders talk about. What they're doing in their building, in the buildings right now. And they're adding more power into each building and having to load up more power for charging stations. And. All of, all of this does have a carbon emission in and of itself. And so. When we talk about uh, carbon emissions and this carbon uh, solution. I, I, I like it and I, I, I'm, I'm all for uh, trying to green, green up. I think it's um, it's hard to be able to measure some of that and there's real cost. For the buildings as we make the, and this legislation is not something we did. This is a state doing this. Um, but there's a real cost with this and with all the gas that shift over. As everyone here is familiar with everything that you have that's gas and your business will go. And that'll be an effect. And so now all these units that are on top of the buildings that were gas powered. Or heating and cooling now have to go to electric and there's a huge draw for that too. And so there's, there's this uh, cascading demand for power. As we try and shift to this green and we have, we're taking away power support sources that are. Um, clean and uh, I still don't know where we're coming up with it yet, but I, 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 I guess I. Approach all of it with um, some trepidation, like I want to be responsible. But I want to make sure we have, whatever we put out there is a thoughtful solution. And I know that we're gonna get stuck doing some things we don't want to do just because that's the, the states requiring or we have no choice, but. We've, we have to be able to provide some sense of reason. And so I share this as real time data. It is affecting costs and when you see something that has to go up. Uh, thirty three percent on a building, that's a huge cost for, for an electrical. And then that draw is a irresponsible, uh, some level of irresponsible draw because now. It's requiring more of something. It doesn't, it's not disappearing. There's not a magic source of power. It's. Not like you just plug it in, it comes from the magic fairy. It really is coming from somewhere. So we, we have to be mindful of what, what challenges this is gonna present on our infrastructure. And how we create policy and how we can try and be more business friendly with what we do with that is try and mitigate the. Impact on these buildings and, and the, and then say, and the owners alike. So anyhow, there's my.
Great.
Soapbox.
Um, Mr. Pearson, did you have any comments? And, and your hand's not up, but I just want to give you an opportunity.
No, not right now. Thank you.
Seeing nothing, Mr. You're. Nope, nothing. Okay.
Oh, can you hear me?
Wait.
It's not working. It looks like.
He's unmuted, but we can't hear him.
Oh.
I'm not sure why.
Okay, we'll save it for next time. Okay, Mr. Pearson. Thank you.
Should, should have been here.
Short-termer, yeah. Okay. Anyway, um, any other questions, follow up? Uh, okay, Mr. Wegman?
Right. A, a number of years ago, um, James Mishner, who wrote the book Space and Hawaii and some of those. Uh, he spoke at a test pilot school graduation and, and he, he was talking about. Sometimes we have these great ideas and he, and he used the analogy of peeling the skin off of, or layers of an onion, just keep peeling it off. He said, at some point you peel a layer, one too many and the onion won't grow. And so once we have some of these ideas, we have to remember that um, and, and I think uh, Mr. Combs uh. Really hit it. I mean, it doesn't come from nowhere. We, we, we have to manage these resources and think about. As we move from one step to another, um, if you've been watching the news, the guys out at the space station lost a toolkit. Got away from them. And so every movement in space, you gotta be thinking. Because it can just float away and you're not gonna go out there and get it. It's gone. And uh, and so in a sense, that's what we. As we try to manage our resources for this community and then deal with other government agencies that. Um, sometimes from our perspective, doesn't look like they're thinking. Um, we, we, we need to challenge and try and make something that works for all of us.
So, thank you. Yep, nope, great. So um, any other comments um, for tonight? How about staff? You have a few last.
Just a last comment. We have one more meeting for this year, December fourth. It will be the final meeting for uh, Mr. Daniels. It will be the final meeting for Mr. Pearson. And um, I'm not sure if Mr. Parsons, uh, I know that Mr. Wegman has reapplied. I don't know if Mr. Parsons did, so we will definitely have a switch over in planning commission members in January. But um, please come on the fourth because we have some strong goodbyes to say.
Not the fourth, it's the sixth.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You're right. The fourth is Monday.
You, you confused me. Okay, great. So that would be the um, December sixth and nothing on the twentieth.
Correct. Correct.
That's great.
Is that a gift exchange or?
You're welcome to spread something for each other. You're happy. You're welcome to do.
Yeah, there again, uh, Mr. Pearson, December sixth. I hope you can be in attendance. And I will confer with uh, Mr. Parsons as well. Like to have a, you know, one last. Hooprah, you know, for myself and outgoing, so um, there again, I have nothing else. Staff has nothing else. Thank you so much. Thank you, audience for being here. We'll call the meeting adjourned.